Elementary person or whatever the case might be.
But then again, if our enrollment, we have to use that most.
But the year after, we're going to be in big trouble because the enrollment's going to, number's going to be even lower. Because we have to use those one of those.
We're losing a class of 25 seniors. And if you look at what.
What. Oh, it's on that other sheet.
This is Schmidt put together there. We have 24 kindergarteners doing it, so I mean, that's a wash. And if we have 23 or 25 kindergarteners going up again for the next year. Mrs. Walter, how many juniors do you have?
That are going to be seniors?
It's a smaller class.
Yeah, it's like 23, 24, something like that.
So it's still, so we're not gaining anything.
No.
We're, we're staying in that 311 range for the next couple of years.
Yeah.
That's cool districts.
Like TJ was saying, I have somebody this year that's still in need and the next year, where, where we're thinking we're going to be at this year.
That we're trying to get somebody retired so that we don't have to replace them. And that's just a horrible thing to keep hoping.
Exactly. And you can't, yeah.
That's cool districts in the state of Kansas planned our numbers being down next year because of more parents homeschooling. They figured out that, hey, it's not as bad as we thought it was.
That's a reality. It could happen. It could happen.
We have parents say that, how?
We, we've kind of talked about that because there. Um, there are some families that are pleased with how things are going with their students. Now, they haven't done it all year long. They've done it for March and April, but, and we still have three weeks in May.
But if we have families that were on commence regarding homeschooling or public school, this may push them the other way.
That's what.
And there's shows that probably would have got pushed the other way and said, heck, no, I'm not going to do this. But you know, every family in their room is different and what they want for themselves and their children is different. And we might have some families that decide this isn't, what we're doing now is more what they want for their kids.
And that's a benefit of living in America. We can make choices for what we want for our kids.
So in other words, when you look at these options too and see, knowing that we need to do something here, how much shorter for Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Walter as far as planning, lesson planning. And just to make it easy, eliminate the ones we cannot implement on a short term. I mean, if we look at, for example, option D, that requires professional development before putting your staff, right?
Yeah.
So.
That's something that we need to look at.
I think that if, that if your staff felt like that compartmentalized teaching would be a great thing for their building in the long, you know, down the road, that will be something to look at. But I don't.
Not like, not like I think it's, I mean, yeah.
But, but you guys doable, but. But I'm guessing that they don't think that that's a, a better fit for the kids. Sorry, there's two questions around here. Patty, can I?
Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was just making the statement that I think that that would be better, I mean, dollar wise, you know, that John, I know that we have done that in the past. They have been departmentalized where the, the kids rotate around. And I guess it seemed to work pretty good and I don't know why they switched. So I mean, but that's, that's going back, but it just seems like it, it comes to departmentalize and then it goes back and then it goes, I mean.
So I talked to him, but it doesn't, doesn't work as well? No, not, in my opinion, compartmentalized teaching, when done properly, is an excellent strategy. And I know a lot of buildings, elementary wise, even down to first and second grade are using that model. However, as we talked about, you really have to find individual teachers that it plays to their strength, science, math. STEM is a very large component coming in. That's another thing we haven't even talked about. We have to get computer science standards in there, all the way down to our kindergarteners next year. So that's going to have to be built into the day. Um, so I think compartmentalized teaching definitely is, is an area that we need to look at in elementary school. This is not the year, unfortunately. And eventually we both have maybe some retirements and an ability to hire staff and we get higher staff to meet those needs. Something for the future.
Absolutely.
Part of your plans, I think.
I think it's something we should.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Discussing it.
Yes.
Working towards it.
Well, if the training, if the teachers can get trained this year or whenever to do that and make a flip off into that next year, I mean theoretically. If everything goes. Yeah. On April, it'll work good.
So looking at the options that we had there in front of us on the table. What do you as principal feel and, and your staff and for you as administrator, be the best options?
When we wrote this, if you go back to our very first page of this, we wrote for building goals. And I do know that finances are a consideration for every district, but we really have to look at what's best for students. One of the things to think about is, is moving sixth graders up. When we looked at that plan, Mrs. Walter and I, we were discussing that back in February. Actually, we've been discussing that back since August. It wasn't even necessarily a budget consideration. It was what's best for students. Based on what staff told us at both buildings. And what we hear that maturity, the ability to be depend, um, independent at those higher grades is needed. And maybe moving that sixth grade up would allow them to, to build that maturity. And hopefully be more independent as they transition on into high school. So I would say that's a consideration, although it doesn't provide cost savings in the future. It could particularly as we continue to, to grow more the elementary. And as I said, it's always easier to move elementary teachers up by since you're wise. You know, if you're K six, it's not as hard to move up than it is to have secondary teachers go down. The other thing is, it's just really important that we have options for students and plan times for my staff. And I just honestly do not feel as if my building can take any more cuts to staff. If you look at and I mapped out what my paraprofessionals do on a daily basis and my teachers. If I'm using a paraprofessional possibly to be an instructional aide, I'm down another person. And it's important to know, when we talk about sped pairs, sped pairs cannot cover recess duty. They cannot cover lunch duty. They only help with a particular student. And they might be able to cover recess if, if they have their special education students out there. Right. And is assisting in that plan. So I'm going down to less and less people with more job responsibilities. So I, I can't tell you, as I, as I told TJ, there's no easy answers.
What's your, what's your pre-K building look like with 25 kids in?
We, we cannot do that.
So.
Pre-K, you mean putting them all together into one?
Well, I mean, the, the build, some of the discussion we'd had if the sixth grade moved up was possibly being able to put pre-K into that kindergarten building.
Pre-K.
I guess I'm wondering, you said that we may outgrow.
We have outgrown our space. I mean, we do not have a, a functional classroom right now that we can use. Oh, I think we had talked about moving kindergarten, if we move sixth grade out back into the regular building. The problem lies in with that is they have center activities, which is a part of the early childhood. And a lot of their center activities and their desk, it, it's, it's not a large enough space in the main building.
So they might be better off staying right where they are.
Yes.
We might be better off keeping them where they are.
Yes.
And then utilizing that space for something else.
Yes.
Your thoughts, Mrs. Walter? On the movement sixth grade?
I don't know that there's one that's better than the other. I ca, I, I don't know. I have concerns about. I mean, I, I know if you cut staff or don't replace staff, I guess. We also lose some CTE funding, which is considerable. Um, if we don't replace one of those positions. And the band and vocal, uh, I don't know, maybe, I don't know. There's always, there's, there's pros and cons to all of them.
And as far as option A, because that's going to have an impact on the building.
Yeah, um, it's, it's, I think there's a lot more pros than there are cons for that. Um, just, I mean, I think it, it's probably better for kids to move up age wise. Um, I don't know. I have a little concern with this, this year, just because of the whole COVID thing. They didn't get to finish out their.
Right.
This year's fifth graders didn't get to finish out their fifth grade year, but I don't, you know, is that enough to say, no, it's not going to be a good move for them? I don't know. We have the space. We have, if we, we have, we're just, we do, we just have to reorganize things just a little bit differently. And I think it's possible. Athletic wise, I mean, there's a cost there because you'd have to buy more uniforms and more equipment. But I know that's a, that was kind of a big push for this community to have sixth graders participate in sports. And it would be kind of a natural transition into that.
But that's one thing we wouldn't have to do if we would have.
Right, we wouldn't have to, yeah.
You wouldn't have to.
Wouldn't have to, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't have to have them in sports if we would.
Okay, we can have them next year. We can move them next year up.
So they could still be there.
Just not do seventh, eighth grade, they can still be in high sports. Yeah, gotcha. Okay. There would be some.
So you feel it would be feasible this year to move the sixth grade or?
Um, I, this year, this year, I guess, yes. How do parents feel about it? I'd like to know.
That was even my question. It seemed like we had, with the sixth graders doing sports, it seemed like we had parent feedback and parent question, new parent whatever. So that would definitely be a good. Something if we can get feelings from.
That I worry that if we wait too much longer than it's, yeah, because we're going to have to get some things situated and. And then the room that I have in mind that they would go into, there would be some, some fixing up that needs to be done in there. Because we, I don't know that we'd have the locker space for the additional. Because the seventh grade or the sixth grade this year is 29, I think. Is that right? And then the next year's A graders are 26 or 25 or 26, and then you add another group. I just don't think we have a locker space. We'd have to do some sort of cubby space in that room. So we'd have to, we'd have to make it.
Make some things work.
User friendly for a sixth grade student, not necessarily a high school student.
We're, um, just thinking about that, the, using the home ec room, next door, would that be able to be utilized for. Their, their book bags and, I mean.
Yeah, we could, yeah, but it's, it would just, we'd, we'd have to do some construction, I guess.
Yeah.
Be some. I was just thinking it, the room that used to be the Mrs. Ward's room, that right, okay. So I was just thinking that that would be something that would give them more room because if we can't have. You know, 28 kids in a room here, but we can have 28 kids in a room here, cluster cubbies and everything like that. We're still, we're trading one space problem for another space problem, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And that's why I want to try and.
Right.
I don't know that that would be much of a, we don't really use that room that often. They use it for, um, we use it for hospitality rooms. We use it for things outside of school mostly. But you know, once in a while, uh, parents will take students in there and give them tests outside the classroom. But it's not that space. I don't think that would be, it wouldn't be that loss of this, big of a space for us. The only problem would be, would be making the space more user friendly for classroom instruction is all.
See, now the grade school, we have enough room for two sections, two sections of each grade. We have enough classrooms for each one of those already.
Right.
So. Taken, do you see what I'm saying? It's like you're taking.
Well, maybe, maybe I don't know what you're asking, but I, I, we, the sixth grade would be on the one room, I guess, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, and if a.
Yeah, I see there would be one room here, so we're looking at 28 kids who would have them in one classroom.
Just for maybe a homeroom time.
Just for like homeroom.
Yeah, it wouldn't be all day long. Because they would, I would rotate them in with the, they'd be, they'd be kind of like the junior high schedule, I think, with, with a homeroom. Maybe, maybe homeroom in the beginning of the day and the end of the day is what I'm trying to think, I'm trying to figure out in my brain. But, um, it would be, it would be a junior high schedule, just tweaked a little bit for a younger person. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
So it would be like a total junior high schedule.
I, I, I see what she means because if, and if they're not going to be in that one room all day long.
Right. I mean, there'll be times of the day that they probably would be in there like a couple of times a day, but the majority of the day, they would be split into two groups.
And I would say at my building, Sharon Luke had 26 students all day in a classroom and it, and it's really difficult. I mean, there's no room to walk, um, you know, it's just, it's a difficult, but she, we, we don't have the ability to change classes as they do at the junior, senior high schools, so.
They always find a way to make it work. They sure do.
But I, I think it's important to know that it did work this year, but it worked with really experienced teachers. The two teachers that made it work this year combined has, have 50 years of experience. And, and so I, I think sometimes that's overlooked about what we're asking teachers to do. Because we have extraordinary teachers, but we're asking more and more. And I just think sometimes we need to consider that as well. Because we want to be able to retain our, our best and our brightest, and we have excellent teachers in this district.
So as a board, I want to hear from, like Mrs. Walter suggested as far as family input. I'm going to schedule an extra board meeting in two weeks and send a survey out on the Facebook site or email.
To say, were they pretty quick about turning the other, the other surveys? Are they quick at turning this back? Do you think your sixth grade parents would be, and maybe, well, maybe they need to do more than just the sixth grade, maybe the fifth grade, because I mean.
Twelve would be the fifth, the ones would be the.
Yeah, but I'm saying maybe they need to do the year behind you, just to find.
We just got to ask.
Or then send out the whole baseball.
I'm not, I'm not, if you're going to say we need to come up with a decision as far as.
Yeah, well, like maybe phone calls, maybe they're, they're not that big of a class. I mean, they could be, we could make phone calls and just ask, yeah, and just ask and so we could get answers immediately.
So board, I mean.
The one thing about that is it doesn't deal with any reductions or cost savings.
Sure.
And, right, and that.
Well, if you.
A and B.
It says A and B go well together.
Right.
Together then.
Those were.
Then it would be.
Looking at A and B.
Yep, you have to look at the, you still have to look at the staff reduction.
Sure.
A lot of synergistic effects.
Pardon?
A lot of synergistic effects.
Yes.
Because I'm going to see, yes, the, the sure, if you're building, you said that's going to be, you're going for something and it's going to be in the market six times two. And option D was required professional development, so I mean, that's out of the question.
Right, but.
And then E.
But A and B did flow together well and it did.
Option E also.
As long as you're looking at.
Right.
E as a part of that.
Yeah, it would have to be or there's really kind of like they said, there's really no point. You're not gaining anything. Except for the fact that it might be better for the kids.
Yeah.
You know, I.
Which the conversation was just about, we were six grade. I'd go to lose side of that.
But exactly, but I guess I was thinking that A and B would be going together with that, with that plan.
What's your locker room space? What's in the eighth grade, I guess, looking down the line, this, having that many kids is not going to go away. If we move them, it's going to be a continuous, is there, do we need to consider some more locker space? Or do we need to try and, if we change it, then the sixth grade kind of works out of the same system or?
Um, you mean like at the hallway lockers?
Do you see down the road, the locker situation continuing to be an issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mrs. Walter, I know a lot of schools are doing away with lockers entirely. I didn't know if your students actually use them.
Oh, yeah, they do. The junior high especially.
I know there's a lot of high schools that are just taking them out because they're not really.
The high school uses and don't use them near as much, but the junior high teacher or they, they require them to have, because they don't want them carrying their, their school bags all the time. But I, if, if we could do some things in that room and make cubbies or some sort of, some, something to put their stuff in and then they can move out into the rest of the building.
Yes, the seventh grade or something.
Yeah.
It's probably going to be some, not just something we can live through this year to get by and then be okay because it's probably going to be a.
Be an arm, be a future issue.
Right.
But we can, okay.
So we're okay with that? Come back in two weeks, special meeting. Yes, Molly, do you want to proceed with that?
Somebody asked you this question.
We got to keep going on the left, yeah.
It might help the discussion if they knew that we were. If we put A and B together, that there was a reduction of one staff member. It might help putting the plans to get together. Am I making a sense about how, what you do with, with moving sixth grade and taking care of things there and what you do at the elementary school? If, um, with losing two teachers that go with the sixth grade to look at schedules and those kind of things. Just something else to think about unless you don't want to make any decisions until two weeks.
Can we at the proper time ask Mr. Crenshaw some of his thoughts on this?
Oh, he's listening now.
Is he still there?
Yeah, he's just, he has.
Is he's on?
Okay, just.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's not very many months from now.
I want to.
Yes, sir.
Is there a, for me, a report?
Yes.
Just as, as an incoming superintendent, um, and this issue we're talking about. Do you have any pretty thoughts you would like to give us?
Sure. We won't have, uh, I've been able to participate in that pattern, eating and listening to this. And there are interesting scenarios that we're going to be challenged with. Uh, once we lose our three-year average of students, the reality is we're going to take an FTE cut at some point in time. That's even not including any reduction in staffing because of tax revenue issues. So those look like daunting things. But I would like to tell you this, it is a very exciting opportunity to maximize our efficiencies. To start thinking about, we must be creative. We don't think outside the box. We start thinking like there's no box to begin with because we can pull this off. But we're going to have to be very creative and, and those efficiencies are important. Obviously, personnel is a majority of any budget. But we're in a different situation than our own households. This school budget is nothing but a whole bunch more zeros behind our own checkbooks. And we will manage this together. We'll have these plans, but I think there's an honest evaluation of where we are. I think when, when, when I come on board and we start having these discussions, those are the things that I'm going to try to lead you to understand is. It's not, it's not all just an improvement. It's, to me, it's very exciting because we're going to be efficient, we're going to improve student learning, we're going to support our staff as best we can. And every decision that we have to make is going to be data driven because those numbers will never lie to us. And so that's my input.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so when would the board like to meet again? And for some of our, like, decisions that you can make and I, I want to make sure we don't take lightly and we'll think it over. And look in that people's input, so. When would work for the board, we just might have a set meeting right now? For a special board meeting?
So would you say, did you say the 20th is what you have your teachers for and you would like to be done doing some of this by then?
Absolutely. If we are looking at moving staff up, we're going to have to move materials, clean out classrooms, do inventory. Uh, teacher budgets to Miranda or do you make 15?
We're about, we're about to meet next Monday.
Next Monday then.
Because we don't have enough time.
Will we have response from parents by this Friday?
If we make phone calls.
If we make phone calls.
Okay. I thought we just meet this Friday.
Well, you can develop.
Oh, okay, Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, when?
You got to tell me.
It'd have to be evening.
Okay.
It'd have to be anytime after two. Four fifteen this morning.
So you want to do a, um, six PM? Anybody off of work by then or five PM?
I don't got four, should I just start? I have four thirty, I think I'll.
So you tell me.
How?
Six. Gina, three?
That works for me.
Okay, so six PM this Friday, we'll meet again and continue our discussion here on divided considerations.
Can we go through some of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we should put as much together with A and B and we'll, we'll go with that so that we have it because that's, I think that's the direction.
I see that maybe it's not an efficiency.
Yes, just. There's a lot of dots that need connecting.
So anything else you want to discuss there on the other options or?
Well, are we going to just go down? Because I know we said, um, no to D, but what about C? Was that part of?
Just why don't you head on to your ass.
Sharing staff.
Beast travel and short that, yeah, as far as sharing staff.
That really wasn't.
You mean have to, depending on what we come up with.
I think, does that fall in under A and B also or?
No, that's a, that's a different plan.
Should be an expense.
Right.
So those.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, to answer John's question, no, option C didn't fall into A or B. It was sharing staff. Because we do have some staff that are licensed in different areas they don't teach in and it would be using them more efficiently in between the two buildings. It's not ideal, but it doesn't directly, it wouldn't be losing a staff member. It'd be using the certifications they already have, but in a different way.
We're going to be utilizing them.
Would it help with some of your lead for plan time at your building? Would it help you with some of that?
Not really.
Not really, because these are poor classes. Okay, okay. Great. Well, we're talking about, you know, being more efficient. I just know that that's going to be. Possibly with the E, um, we could go down to one B class. I again would strongly suggest that that isn't the best idea because it's, I know we're small kids. Twenty seven, twenty eight kids in a B class. Yeah, that's a lot of kids being very active and, yeah.
That goes back up to total.
So did you say this is Friday or Monday?
This.
Friday.
Okay, okay. I saw that on the slide, it was Monday, so, okay.
This Friday at six PM. So that's option C. Option D, we said it's going to take too much, I mean, we can't put into action this year. Uh, option E was looking at activities. Looking at baseball and wrestling, possibly all the, any of the activity due to low numbers.
Well, and what causes these low numbers?
How many kids were out for wrestling this year?
What caused them to be?
How many kids participate or?
From Lincoln?
Yes, from Lincoln. Yeah, say, we're talking low numbers, how many really?
Five started the year, probably.
And how many finished this season?
I think three.
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 Started with five.
I think that's right.
Then we have.
Is that just high school or?
So do we have six from?
Well, it was eleven, it was, um, with Sylvan, I think.
And then three from Lincoln.
Yeah, I'm just talking Lincoln, yeah.
Right, just Lincoln.
After injuries and things, we only, I think, only had two wrestling from Sylvan at the end, towards the end.
But that was with injuries, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they were still on the team.
So they were still on the team, so how many were all in team from Lincoln?
From Lincoln?
Yeah. For wrestling.
I think three.
Three. So what about baseball? How many, because that was one of the other ones. What was the numbers from Lincoln?
Well, it's hard to say because I think we started with, um, maybe eleven or so, but then by the, we practiced two weeks and then we reduced probably three.
And bear in mind in wrestling, Sylvan paid. Miranda divided it out by how many kids were out.
Yes, so I divided everything, um, based on the number of students involved at the time. So in the beginning, when we had five and they had how, for many, it was all, every single injury fee, every coach's fee. It was all divided by the, the amount of students at the time. So Sylvan did pick up, um, especially at the end, they were, they were covering, you know, at least a third of the costs, so.
So they covered at least a third, okay.
Right, how many, how many finished the season?
I think three from Lincoln.
Yeah.
I believe.
Yeah, I, I was just looking here. We started the year on, in December 13th. We took eight kids to Ellis. And then it went down to six and then two and then four and then two and then four and then two and then two and then three and then two and then three and then one. And that was state. We had one at state, three at regional.
And they all travel in one vehicle when they go?
Uh, yes.
And we don't take any other transportation when we go to those?
Uh, we take usually two vehicles. It's usually not a bus. It's usually two vehicles and then like an AD vehicle, so there were times we had three.
So times we took three vehicles for, for Lincoln kids.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's looking at sports, makes options that.
She did tell us the baseball number.
Thank you. I don't know, I don't remember.
Okay.
Because we really, we started, I think, with maybe eleven from Lincoln and about eleven to twelve from Sylvan. And they were still playing basketball. The Sylvan guys were still playing basketball right before spring break because they went to state.
Oh, okay.
And so they, we don't really know for sure how many of those were going to continue to come over, but I think we lost three for sure. Lincoln kids in that two weeks that we practiced, two or three, can't quite remember.
Seven or eight, I think.
Yeah.
Can I add something on sports? Because when we gave these ideas to our building, one of the things my building, and I think yours did as well, mentioned was that rather than reducing programs, if we could look at our assistant coaches and sponsors. And that way we would be able to have a cost savings, but still. But there's only one sport that has more than two. And we really can't have a sport with one coach.
Right.
So there's only, there would be one that we could potentially save by reducing to two instead of, instead of three. I was just throwing that. Right, right, that was it. And I do.
And it was also thrown out there to be able to use different ways, be more creative in fundraising for, at those kinds of programs to help offset those costs.
And just as a side note, the way that baseball is handled is different than the way wrestling is handled in our relationship with Sylvan. So to this point, softball and baseball, we trade those out.
Right.
With Sylvan. So, you know, you would potentially be seeing.
Cost.
You know, softball issues as well. Or we might have to restructure our relationship with them depending on what they wanted to do. And it's hard to know what, how many kids we would have had by the end of the season because we didn't have one.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, sir.
I would just say, and this may have already been mentioned. I have a really hard time hearing some of the conversation. But just part of the high school experience is these activities, part of the whole character development or anything else. I would just say cautiously understand that if two kids decide to go to a school that has a program that we don't have, we could, that could, with ratings and everything else, could equate to forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars per student leaving to go to a district that has a program. And obviously, I don't know the numbers that you're talking about. And I don't know the total expense of these programs. But it doesn't take a migration of too many students to have a very negative effect. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as a, a thought.
Right. And we have seen that happen.
I don't want.
Part of debriefing of that thing.
I don't want to lose programs at all. But I don't want to lose teachers and keep an activity that has three kids.
Right.
I don't want to lose any activities. But we tell teachers, do more, do more, do more, do more, do more. And you're not getting any more for doing it. But we're going to keep a program that has three kids.
Yeah. No, I understand.
And I don't want to lose that program because I think it's a great program. But I just, I feel like we ask teachers, do more, do more, do more. And as we noted, Lincoln is known for a very strong arts program. Arts, music, bands, forensics, those programs. And there are some students that that's, that's why the school is a vocal program. And I hesitate not filling that vocal position and growing a strong program if we lose some of those students. Because vocal opportunities and bands, they provide excellent college scholarships for kids. They sure do. So that's a factor as well.
Okay, to kind of move on. This way, nine fifteen here. Option A was moving on to lunch preparation. That's what I heard. That's going to be quite a vast, the interest cost initially is a.
I think it's something to look at down the road, but I don't think for this year. I mean, because if we could find a way to do it, maybe grant money or something to be able to start a program like that, that would save, because if we could save support staff rather than teaching staff and a grant could pay for the truck and the food carts, that might be something to look at down the road.
Another option like that, when I talked to the people at the State Department, was transport the kids.
No, 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 not that.
And if we had, if we had our own buses. It would be doable, but not, not the way we're set up right now.
But I think it's something to look seriously into down the road.
They mentioned transport their kids.
I don't like that.
There's some districts that will do that. You know, it's a process.
Sounds like that'd be extremely kind of concerning from a localist's approach.
Actually, if you look at.
It's just another option.
Go ahead. I grew up in Poisonson, and I think I've mentioned this before. There was the very last program in the entire state to get a lunch program. But they also, through a donation, built a multimillion-dollar activity center. And that activity center, they use, and it is probably five miles, well, five, a couple miles away from their high school. They transport kids every day from their high school and their middle school for P E. But if you think about it this way, if you're a bus driver and you're owned, or if you're employed by a district, there's not, a lot of people want a full-time job. And so you're busy in the morning, you're busy in the afternoon. That provides you something to do during the day. And you have a full-time job. And it's a way that you can retain people because it's not just, being a bus driver is not just a part-time job.
Makes a full-time job.
Yeah, makes a full-time job. So that's one district that does that.
Well, probably have.
Like I said, I went to look at it, you know, down the road.
Correct. Because one thing we would look at too is our storage capacity to have all the food at the high school. Currently, we don't have this door in the vicinity for the high school and elementary school. So what we have to consider there is, among those options, and to bring back the nice minus A, B, E.
Yeah.
You're bringing back A, B, and E?
Yep. Other discussions for Friday.
And if there's any things that we could find that we could save, like uniforms, you know, things that are on staff, I would appreciate that. Did we discuss paying parents' mileage? I know that was brought up at our buildings. They said that we've got another year on D S plus contract anyway, so, okay.
Yeah. But we're going to start the discussion, absolutely. Yeah. Even if we had one more year, I'm going to start the discussion soon as we start new year because we want to have the plan in place prior to contract. But absolutely, there's something.
I did not miss that, sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
Band involves something we need to make a decision on too, so that you can.
We need to look at being hired another musician else. The music position.
But you said we had to have an executive session conversation first. So.
I got that. Okay, so. And let's move on to annual end of the year appreciation and retirement celebration.
We usually have a nice meal at the end of the year. And we do different things for staff groups. We've spent about a thousand dollars each year on taking care of that. If, if we would think about, and I can't tell you, in superintendent's conversation, a very, very common practice is treat everybody the same and give them chamber bucks that can be spent in your community. They support your community. It would cost us about two thousand dollars to do chamber bucks for the staff that come here. Can't do the end of the year luncheon. We didn't give any special recognitions for teachers because, because we thought we were going to be able to do the luncheon. So that wasn't put into place. So I would ask you to consider that option as a gesture to thank your staff for the things that they've done this year.
My teachers done a tremendous job, especially with COVID-nineteen and so forth. And I truly want to recognize them somehow. I wish it was way.
Maybe give your teacher appreciation lunch this summer, like when we do graduation and just.
That's what I was about to say. If we can do it in combination, in graduation, at graduation, then need them out for work. Because I know a lot of teachers do attend the graduation. If we were allowed to have them, I think, for one.
And I would still like to do, if we can, some kind of retirement at that point. Something for them, then I don't think.
TJ, if our cooks retired, they can not come back and do a luncheon.
Who's that, where are they talking?
Yeah.
She said, yeah.
They're retiring.
We're certainly really not hearing anything anybody's saying.
If the cooks retired, they can't come back and do an appreciation lunch this summer.
But they truly deserve something.
Okay, but I don't need to be cold. If we only do the lunch or the retirement, it costs us a thousand dollars and you want us to do something that costs twice as much?
And we just came from a.
And we just are discussing how, what we're going to cut. I can't do that. I can't spend two thousand dollars on that and then. I just, I can't do that.
But you get the luncheon.
For two thou, no. She said that the chamber bucks would cost twice what we normally do. And we're talking about where we're going to cut staff. I can't do that.
I'm talking about meal. But, yeah, I can hear you. The main thing, we need to do something because they, they do deserve it. They do deserve something.
They do, but we can't, we don't, we don't have the money.
Correct. Well, that's why we are discussing this and that's why.
That's my discussion. We can't spend twice what we normally spend when we're looking at cutting staff. I just don't feel that makes sense budget-wise. We're looking at cutting programs, but we're, I can't, I can't vote for that. We have to figure out what to do with what we can afford.
Correct. And that's why we have this discussion.
If they lift and we can have thirty people, we can't do that luncheon the end of, like, the twenty-second or that.
Teachers are off duty on, at, when the state. Teachers last day is when state is like here.
Okay. If we do this in the summer, then they're still off duty.
We would just have to figure out who's going to cut the food other than the staff that we have to teach, that cuts.
Okay. We'd have to do it before the twentieth if we wanted to do it with the way it's.
Or the other option would be, I guess, just throwing it out there. If we cannot have so many people in a room at the same time, we can do something to acknowledge the retiring people. And then when we come back for next year, we'll start with a meal at the beginning of the year, this school year, for all the staff members to thank for the prior year and all coming back again. For the next.
So we already do the meal anyway.
Correct.
Yeah.
We do something a little extra.
These are great technology and good across the.
Have the school bus delivered and you know what you?
There you go.
Technology, our appreciation, or everything needs to launch.
Yeah. That's what Dr. Sam was mentioning. Yeah.
We have about six teachers that we have a twenty-five-year certificate of service to this profession. Would be recognized too.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, but, just something about it. Gina, bring in any suggestions for end-of-year appreciation and retirements?
I think it would be great to, to just wait and do something later, especially with the restrictions on the amount of people that can be in one place. I think it's hard to really plan anything. And I, I agree. I think I would rather not spend extra money on, on something and just wait and do, do something like a meal later.
What about the ones who are retiring that wouldn't be there for a meal next year?
We could invite them and come eat.
I'm sorry?
We could always invite them to come eat.
That's true.
What'd you say? Sorry, I can't.
I didn't say.
Oh, is that true?
I believe, rather than, they can't come back.
Correct.
They cannot come back.
They cannot come back.
Until in August. They can't because of.
Yeah, for six days, isn't it?
People are not going to work. Well, I will base broad enough, it's August, so we can do anything anyways. And they're getting a tool.
So the consensus is to hold off and wait them. What about the appreciation or what about the retirement? The other one, option would be for the retirement team would be to do something. Eventually, like graduation.
And at this point, we can't have any activity that there's more than ten people. And potentially on the twentieth, there could be thirty, but there still can't be more than thirty people at a time.
Potentially, yes.
I mean.
So I guess we'll wait and see?
Yeah, we didn't really have a choice.
Oh, okay. So moving on to next item, that is graduation. Yes.
One, we need to know, and she's not going to know then. I would say, we would know if we were, the restriction would be loosened, but I don't know if we're meeting, but it's Friday, so that's not going to work, so. So I love that. We're still going to spend a little reception or something for the retirees because we notice it just means everybody else. And sometimes, once you retire, you just go and you don't come back.
It's just a crazy timeline.
Sometimes it's just too hard, so whether we don't come back once you make that decision to, well, to leave, sometimes it's just hard. So.
You could have them come to your June meeting. They would probably still be in the area. And I could step out of the room.
And we could do them one at a time. Pardon? We could do them one at a time.
We could do them one at a time. And I could step out of the building. And the board could, I mean, you could bring one at a time. And we wouldn't have ten in here. And I'm, I'm willing to be a door greeter.
And if come June, we should hopefully, actually, pass ten and be at the thirty.
Be at the thirty. But if we're not at the thirty.
We could possibly do that.
Recognize them with.
I'm sorry, Benny, could you read me that a little louder?
I was saying that if we're still in the ten, I would be willing to go out the door. And you could greet them in here one at a time and share a thank you with each of them, like a little reception, individual reception. But if we're at the thirty, we'll be okay. We could do something.
At the June meeting?
At the June meeting.
For the people that are retiring and like, to recognize their years of service.
I like that idea.
I do too.
I hope that most of you can hear that.
Say that again, Gina.
Am I just a good job, Dr. Benny?
Okay, so something to think about. And we can discuss it further on Friday. Make a determination what we're going to do. And next we have graduation, talking about setting up a date.
We could set up a date in July that I think we could have. Everybody that, as big a crowd as we wanted.
Hopefully, why is Sylvan doing theirs?
July twenty-fifth was the last I'd heard.
Okay.
So for July, up to July eighteenth, every weekend before, on Saturday.
I've already asked her, I can't keep it until the, I mean, she said again.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, that's just one of the.
You just.
At least our graduation invitations, we haven't seen that because we don't know what day to put them, email them out. And then, oh, we got to know something else, you know.
Yeah, we already have one on that Monday on us, so.
I think, I think even, I think even, this is just me thinking from the other side of the fence, is if we know, if we set the eighteenth of July, we can get that stuff set out, we can plan. And we know, hopefully, it'll be open enough to get there. Whereas I, I don't know that we would want to back it up. In that, I mean, with the restrictions, just because, you know, people are going to want to come. Families are going to want to come. They're going to want family members around. I mean, this is.
So the miles haven't been there.
I'm just, I'm just saying, what happens if our restrictions get lifted quicker than what everybody's talking about?
I'm more concerned they won't have lifted when we think. So I would rather go with a July than certainly a June date.
I would read that also.
And she said Ellis workers to me theirs. Not for sure, but I think if you're looking at July and twelve, which is a Sunday.
For planning purposes, it would be nice to set it. And then hopefully, that's the day you can have it and not have to say.
You're going to set it, or do you want to do it a Saturday?
Would it have to be a Saturday? I mean, could we do a Sunday?
We could do whatever we choose.
Except, I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, I bet, yeah.
Nineteenth, I also got it, Sylvan is doing their one twenty-fifth on Saturday, you got the twenty-sixth on Sunday.
Or the nineteenth?
Well, okay, so let's.
Hang on.
No, 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 it's okay. I, just talking to kids, students, and teachers in, in my building, and I know the option was there to have air conditioning, but they really want to have it at either the football field or the high school.
Okay.
That's, that's the, the general consensus of the seniors and the staff. So if we did that, we'd probably want to do it in the morning, because it's cooler, and Sunday morning, we run into church, so maybe it'd be better to do Saturday.
Okay.
That's the same thing.
No, that makes sense, there's logic there.
Yeah.
I wondered the same thing, either earlier morning or later evening, one of the two.
You guys are breaking up just a little bit, are we talking about doing a Saturday morning graduation at the football fields, is that what I'm understanding?
Or the gym, it wouldn't have, yeah, with either, either one.
Or the gym. And being in July and the heat, it's going to be hot, so they're thinking the morning would be better and not to interfere with Sunday morning church.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
So July eighteenth?
July eighteenth?
Why are your teeth looking hurt?
Does that look for you and your staff?
The county fair is coming there.
Oh.
Ah, I don't know, it's usually, that's usually like.
Really, is that early?
Just text me because she's asleep.
Only, yeah, it's early, well.
The county fair is the eighteenth.
So can't be the eighteenth then.
Yeah, I think that is right.
That's early.
July eleventh.
It's still in the twenty-fifth.
July eleventh or August first. And I want to make sure we don't get too close to people and move them to accomplish either.
Um, there was a school I saw there doing theirs on August, like, on the eighth.
What's, what's Sylvan doing for a time, I guess, is there something?
Well, the last I talked was nine o'clock, they were doing early, yes.
Oh, and the same deal is at nine o'clock?
Yes.
Because air conditioning, yeah, cooler, yeah.
Unless we wanted to do an evening, like John said, later in the evening when the sun goes down, but it's still pretty hot in there.
It's going to be hot.
I mean, it's going to be hot in there.
We can't hear it at all.
I was just thinking maybe doing in the evening instead of the morning, because it would be maybe cooler, but, or as cool, but I don't think there's ever, I mean, I don't know that it would be one any better in the evening.
The other reason I've heard that schools are looking at doing morning graduations is because there's already so many summer activities that are scheduled in the evenings. So if we tried to hit a morning ceremony, that might be better. That's just some of the feedback I've heard from other schools.
So temporary than, than August first.
So we're looking at either the eleventh of July or August first.
I think we'll be open that enough. It depends on how much. She's like July eleven.
It's not matter what time we choose.
They do the football field, they can all spread out if they have to.
Yeah. That's always.
So, set July, then that dinner, are you everybody okay with that?
July what?
Eleventh, Saturday.
Saturday, July eleventh, like, what do we say in, like, morning, like?
Eight o'clock?
Nine?
Seven AM.
Yeah. She just said six o'clock.
You said eleventh, nine, nine AM. Okay. All right. That's going to be an action item coming up here, so. We're going to move on to action items next here on the agenda, we still have that quite a basis to go here tonight, so. Moving on to need to take action on an anonymous donation check to the district. Will we? Told him two hundred and twenty dollars.
He gets out of.
Motion by Deborah, second by David, and, and a discussion?
Thank you to whoever they were, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh. And next we need to take action on approval of disposal of material equipment and property no longer useful to, using to ninety-eight to educational activity needs. And that should be posted for bids.
Awesome.
Thank you, John, for a second.
I'll second.
Second.
What, Gina?
Would Gina have, okay, second by Gina?
I'll give it up for Gina.
Any discussion? Any decisions?
I'm, were we going to visit with the, the library?
I will do that.
Send it there, they, they need.
So Sylv, visit with the library about a donation or seal bids?
Right, and say if the library, if there's something they can do to utilize, not saying, I don't know that there would be that, I mean, yeah, yeah.
So you want re, redoing that question?
You want them to have first option and then offer, okay.
Yes.
I would move that we give the public library first option at disposal of library equipment or anything they could use, and then put it up for sealed bid.
So that could be a new question.
Okay, and any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh. And next we need to approve meal cost increase, lunch price will be increased to the following, Lincoln Elementary students lunch will be two ninety-five, Lincoln Junior Senior High School student lunches will be three ten, adult lunches will be three eighty, and PK Milk will be twenty-five dollar per year. Breakfast price will be Lincoln Elementary School, one seventy-five, Lincoln Junior Senior High School, one eighty-five, and adult, two thirty, so an increase of five cents, I mean, need a motion to do so.
I second.
I second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, David, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Seven oh.
We don't have.
We don't have anything on that yet. Next we have, need a motion to approve the Lincoln Junior Senior High School wood shop heating option.
We would ask that you would approve the six thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars to install the ninety-six percent efficiency furnace.
How do you agree? Do a personal evaluation. Thank you, David, thank you, John, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next we have our gym floor refi finishing debt. Need a motion to approve the debt.
I would approve for state maintenance for the oil-based procedure.
Eighteen seventy-one, three twenty.
Okay, and that was a total of, um.
Eighteen thousand.
Is, yeah, eighteen seventy-one, three twenty.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Patty, you had that one, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh. Next we have an action to accept proposal for Metner Field rerouting project.
Okay.
For both.
Both.
I'll move, I'll move with, or move with both of them on the twenty-six gauge.
Twenty-six gauge, okay.
I would second.
Thank you, Deborah, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh. And that's for twenty-six gauge metal roofings.
Yes, that's for a total of eighteen thousand six hundred eleven dollars, forty-six.
And next one, we are taking care of Friday, so we're going to move on to. On the one to, we're going to hold up on, we need an action to approve the graduation considerations for July.
Okay, July eleventh at nine AM, are we doing it inside or out, or are we going to decide that?
They'll probably determine depending.
Okay, I'll determine later, later, okay, July eleventh, nine AM.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh. And next we need to make an executive session for negotiations. Five minutes, five minutes. Need a motion, we need to execute session for five minutes.
I'll settle.
Thank you, Gina, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Motion by Gina, second by John, the D U S two ninety-eight for the meditation, we need to execute a session at nine forty. For five minutes, with superintendent, for the purpose of discussing matters related to employer, employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with representatives or representatives of the body of agencies, and we're also going to have our incoming superintendent present on the call. The executive session is required to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest. All those in favor?
Aye.
So.